Good evening, everyone. Tonight, the Finance Committee meeting, Wednesday, 7 May 2014. Tonight, we're going to have a public hearing on the FY15 proposed budget. Before we get into the public hearing, I'd like us all to rise and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we adjourn and go into the public hearing, we'll do some quick business. We've got minutes. There's a set of minutes in front of you. If you take a minute to review them. And the minutes are from the 29th of January, 29th of April 2014.
Twenty-nine, it should have been thirty. I wrote twenty-nine, but...
It was, yeah, it was. It was the thirtieth. Okay. Any other changes, corrections, additions?
I gotta read it.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
I'll make a motion except the minutes.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, I need a motion to adjourn to go into the public hearing.
If you don't adjourn, Mr. Chair, you just go into the public hearing. You stay in open session, go in and go into the public hearing.
Okay. I need a motion to go into the public hearing.
I make a motion to go into public hearing.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. First is the legal notice. The legal notice appeared in the Milford Daily News, Tuesday, April 29. Legal notice, Town of Millville, Notice of Public Hearing, Finance Committee. The Town of Millville Finance Committee will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, 7 May 2014, at 7:00 PM at the Longfellow Municipal Center in Millville to address the financial articles that will appear on the warrants for the special and annual town meeting to be held on Monday, the 12th of May 2014, at the Millville Elementary School. Richard Corvello, Chairman, Millville Finance Committee. That's done. Okay. We have the special town meeting. I think we'll go through that first on there. We've already voted on them. Now, so normally to read the audible?
It's completely up to you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Can we just briefly read the form?
Yep. Okay, the first article is Article One, Snow and Ice Budget. To see if the town will vote to transfer from any available funds the sum of money to fund Highway Department Snow and Ice Removal, Account Number 001423524000. Supplement the FY214 Town Budget approved under Article Nine of the Annual Town Meeting Warrant, 13 May 2013, or take any action relative thereto. Every year, the snow and ice budget, normally, we don't put as much money into that account only because we don't know how much, what kind of a winter we're going to have. And every year, normally, it comes out of free cash to make up the difference. The Finance Committee approved this four to nothing, four zero, with one absent. And the Finance Committee recommends the article as written and transfer the sum of $174,284.87 from free cash to fund the deficit in the FY14 Snow and Ice Budget. Any discussion?
Do you want me to...
Please, yep.
My name is Valerie Hargreaves. I live on Lake Street in Millville. And I didn't, one of my questions was how much it was going to be, which you just answered. How much does that leave of free cash after you transfer it?
Well, there's several other items that are going to come out of free cash.
Right. So, I mean, I don't know how much is in free cash to start with.
Valerie, the sheet right there, under your right hand, will explain all of that.
Yep. Two ninety-five to start.
Okay, two ninety-five to start with.
Nine forty-five.
And this will go throughout the articles. Okay, because the only articles, I reviewed the articles, and none of the articles had the amount, so I didn't know what we were talking about.
Yeah, it's right on.
How much do you usually fund the snow and ice budget? You say you don't usually put much.
Sixty thousand.
Sixty thousand? Okay. Okay, so we have $174,000 and change outstanding in bills for this past year?
The bills aren't outstanding. The bills have been paid. Back in January, the Finance Committee and the Selectmen voted to overspend the budget, which is allowed by Mass General Law. So, the vote was made to overspend, but now we need to formally transfer those funds.
Okay.
So, it's 174 plus sixty is the total amount spent for snow removal this year.
This year.
Right.
But this is, well, this year was more, we had a lot more snow. I think last year, we had less snow. So, I assume, without knowing the numbers, that it was less last year. And I can understand that. What happens if it doesn't get passed? Usually does. I reviewed one meeting, and it usually does. What happens if it doesn't get passed?
That's a question for Town Council.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'd be in default and not paying our bills.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I'm trying to get through history of snow and ice.
Even last year, it was like, probably ten hundred.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, Article Two, Prior Year Unpaid Bills. To see if the town will vote and raise and appropriate and transfer from any available funds a sum of money for the payment of unpaid bills of previous fiscal years pursuant to Mass General Laws, C-44, Symbol 64, or take any action relative thereto. The Finance Committee recommends the article as written and transfer the sum of $732.30 from free cash to fund prior year unpaid bills. And the vote was four to zero with one absent. Any discussion? Okay, Article Three, See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and transfer from any available the sum of $10,000 to replenish the Finance Committee Reserve Fund. or take any other action relative thereto. The Finance Committee recommends the article as written and transfer $10,000 from free cash to supplement the FY14 Finance Committee Reserve Fund. The Reserve Fund is there to take care of any unforeseen bills that come up beyond the normal budget of the different departments. Forty thousand dollars right now, I don't know if you have. I didn't take that into account. How much is actually left in that account? I do know that we spent almost $35,000 making repairs in this building this year.
Right, you've got $651, I'm sorry. You've got $4,287 left in that account, but we're anticipating the library oil tank.
Right.
And I'm not sure if that will come with that.
Okay. Okay, Article Four, Reallocation of MSBA Funds. To see if the town will vote to reallocate the amount of $261 from Education MES Structural Expenses, and $2,852 from Education... Eight hundred and fifty-five dollars from Education MES Oil Tank, MES Water, Account 0301000530942. Such items of money to fund further expenses related to the water system operations at the Millville Elementary School, or take any other action thereof. Finance Committee recommends the article as written. And the vote was four to another.
Any discussion?
Any discussion? Yeah.
Just in fairness to you, what about future maintenance of the oil tank if we should need it? Well, how would, is it a different account that we would then, if work needed to be done on the oil tank in the future? Is that a different...
Maintenance of an oil tank would come out of the school's budget.
Out of the school's budget? Okay. Is there...
Pursuant to the, pursuant to the town's lease agreement with the school, anything beyond $20,000 is paid for by the town. So, the installation of an oil tank, purchase and installation certainly exceeded that. But anything under $20,000, such as maintenance items, would fall under the school's budget.
Okay. And then, what's the MSBA reimbursement for account, for updated account balances?
Massachusetts School Building Authority?
Yep.
That was money that was left over from what projects?
First payment of the elementary school.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Supplement, oh, Article Five, Supplement Capital Budget Public Safety Radios. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and transfer from any available funds the sum of $2,200 to fund a deficit in the Capital Budget Line item entitled Public Safety Radios, or take any other action relative thereto. Submitted by the Chief of Police and Fire. Finance Committee recommends the article as written and to transfer the sum of $2,200 from ambulance receipts reserved, public safety, to supplement the Public Safety Radios Capital Line item.
Do you want to speak to, do you want to speak to that? That ambulance receipt reserves what they are presently?
Yeah, presently, in the public safety ambulance receipts reserved, there's $61,698. And there's another Article Eight that's going to, is recommended that comes out of that as well. Okay, Article Six, Fund Highway Dump Truck. To see if the town will vote to transfer the amount of $21,000 from Principal Highway Dump Truck, Account 0001752598002, to Highway Dump Truck. Three-year bond anticipation note, Account 0001930530918, and further, to transfer the amount of $38,888 from free cash to Highway Dump Truck. Three-year bond anticipation note, Account 0001930530918, or take any other action thereto. The Finance Committee recommends the article as written and transfer the sum of $38,888 from free cash to fund the Highway Dump Truck. Any questions on that?
I assume that this purchased a truck.
What's that?
It purchased a truck. Was it a new truck?
Yeah.
Yes, correct.
What's the cost savings to the town if we do move the money for free cash instead of keeping it as borrowed money?
I think it was in the vicinity between three and four thousand a year. And it was a two-year note, so we were saving eight thousand in that range there. I don't have the exact figure.
I'm not counting for you to have.
But when we discussed it, it made better sense to save that amount of money by paying it outright.
Okay.
Town meeting voted last year to borrow the money. The reason the article is on the special town meeting now is the town accountant's advice to us was to pay it.
Right.
Pay it cash.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
You'll be saving the town for two years.
Saving that money, yeah.
I can understand that. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just a point of clarification. I believe it was three to four thousand over the entire term.
Okay, all right. Okay, Article Seven, Rescind Borrowing Authorized for the Dump Truck. See if the town will vote to rescind the vote taken at the special town meeting held on December 10, 2012, in connection with the borrowing authorized for the purchase of the Highway Dump Truck, or take any other action in relation thereto. Submitted by the town accountant. The Finance Committee recommends the article as written, four to zero with one absent. This particular article, because the town meeting voted to borrow the money, and we're making the recommendation to pay it cash, we need to rescind, rescind that prior vote. And that's the reason for that.
Just one question on that. If Article Six in the special election does not pass, then you have to remove the Article Seven.
Correct. Yeah. Article Eight, Long-Term Debt Principal Title V Receipts Reserved. See if the town will vote to transfer from any available funds the amount of $5,205 from Title V Receipts reserved to Long-Term Debt Principal Title V Account, Take any other action in relation thereto. Finance Committee recommends the article as written. Any discussion on that?
Rich?
Oh.
Can you explain a little bit more about what this actually does? I don't know what the Water Pollution Abeyment Trust is or the Town Septic Betterment Loan Program.
There's funding set aside so that residents with failed septic systems can borrow at a...
Reduced rate, I believe?
I don't know if it's a reduced rate or more advantageous rate than borrowing it from a local bank.
Okay.
And that's made, and we have to fund that account every year. And this, I think it was overdrawn, is the reason for that?
Correct. And the loans are at 2%.
Okay. And they, I think they go through the Board of Health if they want to...
Correct. Yep.
Thank you.
And that is all of the Finance Committee financial articles on the special town meeting warrant. What?
Article Nine, it's just based on stipule, it just states the...
That's, that is not a Finance Committee article.
Okay.
Okay. If there are no more questions on the special town meeting warrant, we'll go right into the annual town meeting warrant. Article One, Monetary Increases. See if the town will vote to authorize any motion or amendment to increase any monetary articles or line items as recommended by the Finance Committee, presented at this town meeting, shall be out of order unless such motion or amendment states that the source of funding is being from available free cash or the line item article or other funding source that will be reduced by the same amount, or take any other action in relation thereto. Submitted by the Finance Committee, approved by the Finance Committee, four to zero, one absent. Any questions on that? There are none? Article Two, Authorized Loans. See if the town will vote to authorize the town treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow money in anticipation of the revenues of the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2014, in accordance with the provisions of Mass General Laws, C-44, Symbol 4, and to issue a note or notes therefore payable within one year, and renew any notes as may be given for a period of less than one year in accordance with the provisions of Mass General Laws, C-4417, or take any other action in relation thereto. This is an annual article which allows the treasurer to borrow money as necessary, fund the operations of the government in anticipation of receiving tax receipts, grants, bonds, et cetera. It was approved four to zero with one absent. Any questions on that? Article Three, Highway Department, Chapter 90. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, to borrow or transfer from any available funds or any combination thereof, the sum of money for the Highway Department to be used for engineering, construction, reconstruction, and repair to towns, roads, and bridges, which set funds to be reimbursed by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts under Mass General Laws, C-90, Chapter 90, or take any other action in relation thereto. This is an annual article which allows the town to raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer money in anticipation of reimbursement of revenues from the Commonwealth for road repair assistance under Chapter 90. And the Finance Committee recommends the article as written.
What would happen if the town doesn't get the state money? I mean, do we anticipate a certain amount coming in? And is that the cap that we usually set in order to borrow money?
We find out usually every April what our fiscal year allocation is going to be. And then, that money is available to the highway surveyor for projects. If he doesn't use the money in that fiscal year, it rolls over to the next year. So, he can borrow up to what we've got allotted for us under the states, in our state account. And for specific details about the amounts, that Mr. Malali would be much better to answer that for you.
You want to add it?
No, she's...
Okay.
As of right now, there's a little discrepancy between what we have for a number and what the state has for a number. But it's up way around the $250,000 mark that we have allotted for us to the state to spend. They actually have a higher number than I have, so it's in our favor. But that's the anticipation for this.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Was there any accrued number from the year prior that will be carrying the balance forward?
There's $112,000.
From last year?
From last year.
Is that incorporated into the $250,000, or is the $250,000 on top of it?
That's incorporated.
Any other questions? Okay, Article Four, Revolving Funds. To see if the town will vote, create, and/or continue authorizing revolving funds for certain town departments pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, for the fiscal year beginning July 14, as follows. Cable access programs, expenditure limit $15,000. Police department, expenditure limit $1,000. Inspection services, expenditure limit $10,000. Animal control, $5,000. Senior center, $5,000. Senior center...
Van ridership.
Van and ridership. The first one was facility rental income. And the second one, van ridership, $5,000. Finance Committee recommends the article as written, four to zero with one absent. Any discussion?
What was for the inspectional services? Is that above and beyond what's in the budget for the coming year for salaries? And like, in the whole control? Because I know the animal control looks like it's a budgeted this coming fiscal year for $5,000. Is that this $5,000, or is it a different $5,000?
Yep. The inspectors get a stipend, an annual stipend. That's what you see in the operating budget. In addition to that amount, they get a per-inspection rate of pay, which comes from the monies received from fees or permit applications. Those go into what we call a revolving fund. So, those don't affect the operating budget at all. So, both the operating budget and the revolving fund are used to pay the inspectors.
Any other questions? Article Five, Cable License Fees. To see if the town will vote to appropriate the lesser amount of either 50% of any fees collected in the cable license fund as return from the cable license holder to the town worth $7,500, and forward said funds to the Superintendent of Schools of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District for use by the Director of the Library and Media Services to enhance the curriculum offerings that are available in the school districts, and further authorize the Cable Access Committee to forward said funds on or before June 1, 2015, or take any other action thereto. Finance Committee recommends the article as written, four to zero with one absent. Any discussion? Article Six, Collective Bargaining Agreement, Police, FY215, 2015 to FY2017. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from any available funds a sum of money to fund salary increases and other cost items associated with implementing the collective bargaining agreement between the Town of Millville and the Teamsters Local 170 Police Officers Union effective July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2017, or take any other action thereto.
This is a Board of Selectmen article?
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, if you'd like, I can speak to that briefly. That article was placed on the warrant, if you will, as a placeholder because at the time, we needed to finalize the warrant. We were still in negotiations. I can tell you that since that time, the Board of Selectmen have signed a memorandum of agreement. We've come to an understanding with the union, so the board and the townspeople can, in fact, vote on that article Monday evening. And the monies are allocated in the FY15 operating budget we, in preparing the budget, anticipated and hoped that that would pass, so...
Okay, any other discussion?
So, how in the budget, whatever was approved... So how in the budget, whatever was approved is in the line items?
It's already in the line items, yep.
Okay, Article seven, Blackstone Valley Vocational Regional School District Debt Authorization. See if the town will vote to approve the total two point nine million dollar debt authorized by the Blackstone Valley Vocational Regional District School Committee on April seventeenth, two thousand and fourteen for costs of adding to, equipping, reconstructing, and making extraordinary repairs to the regional school, including all costs incidental and related thereto, with the town's portion share to of debt payments computed in accordance with the regional agreement commencing in fiscal year two thousand and sixteen. Submitted by the Vex, Blackstone Valley Regional School District. Finance Committee recommends the article as written, four to zero with one absent. Any discussion?
Um, the average yearly cost that you have down here is seven thousand five hundred thirty-five. Is that the average yearly cost per resident or for all the residents?
That's the, the total cost on that. To the towns.
To the town.
Every year.
Every year for the term of the, for the loan, twenty years.
Now, maybe people live in Millville, we're going to buy that number by the amount that pay taxes here in Millville, right? Okay.
Right.
And then, um, don't know if you can answer this, probably not, gonna throw it out there. If it's approved, is there any type of guarantee that this will stop individuals from going out of district?
That is the intent, um, of developing, I think it's three programs. Yeah, and I think our originals, uh, there's three programs and it's keeping to go out of district to try county. And Jerry, if you, you want to elaborate on that, uh?
The average over the last four years that were paid by the taxpayers here in Millville uh, was one hundred and twenty-five thousand five hundred dollars per year by how we do it, uh, district, uh, tuition. Uh, the intent here is to offer those programs that were, first of all, state approved, absolutely, uh, necessary, uh, with job opportunities available. Uh, and these particular, uh, North Walk Addy, the one, um, which has a, a total bill of about, uh, about thirty thousand, thirty-five thousand dollars for transportation per student. Uh, if we had veterinary assistant approved, uh, the cost of town in Millville would drop from thirty-five thousand down to seventy-one hundred dollars per student. So that, the, the game plan is to offer those things that are state approved, uh, that are necessary and at the same timeframe being able to offer, uh, to the towns, all towns, uh, the availability of, uh, reducing your other state tuition, uh, district tuition.
So you're gearing this as these programs are offered by another school that BBT does not offer?
That's correct.
And if we start offering it, we're hoping that these students will choose that school over another school?
That's correct. We, we're a choice school. So, uh, the people have the right to choose if we offer the, uh, uh, class, say veterinary assistant, cyber, uh, safety, the things of that nature, then the students who wish to go to those, uh, particularly, or they have that particular class, uh, would then have to go to BBT, uh, because they're one of the thirteen towns in the collective.
Any other questions? Article eight, fund capital budget, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from any available funds, a sum of money to fund the fiscal year two thousand and fifteen proposed capital budget, or take any other action relative thereto. The Finance Committee recommends the article as written and transfer the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars from ambulance receipts, reserved general government, and forty-eight thousand dollars from ambulance receipts, public safety, uh, to fund a new police cruiser, thirty-eight thousand dollars. Replace the boiler at the fire department for ten thousand dollars. And repair the floor at the Millville Elementary School cafeteria for twenty-five thousand dollars. Any discussion?
So the numbers you just gave are what we're transferring and what it's going to be used for?
Correct.
Correct.
Uh, just one question. As part of the green energy committee, uh, we, we're looking at all the different buildings, town, out of state energy. There's a report that we had that has stated the potential to change the boiler system, fire station, uh, oil, fire, water, to a propane system, uh, would be advantageous to the town, or the town. We haven't got that approved, you know, cause we're not a green community yet. But I did want to make a note that, uh, that potential does exist and that there is, we're still, I think Joe was still looking at the amount of firms and the amount of energy cost savings by going to a propane system, uh, that could, uh, could work more efficiently than put the oil and water. Uh, we should make it known that that's available.
That's good, and I, and I know you're working towards grants i- as well on, for the entire town. And if that happens, we might be able to not spend that ten thousand dollars, uh, for that and we can put it back into the, into the, uh, free cash. But we know the boiler has to be changed somehow. And this gives us, like the elementary school, a placeholder, uh, to make that change. Hopefully during the course of the next fiscal year, something will break with the green energy and we'll be able to save some money on that. Um, in the event that we don't get a grant, I think it'd be in our best interest to probably, um, follow the advice of the studies to, um, install a system, the propane, and go, and go that way. If that's the best, best route to take, so.
Chairman.
Yes.
I'd also like to point out when you're, you're wanting to replace the boiler system in, in there. The boiler system is the whole system. It doesn't mean that at a later time we can't come out and change the burner from oil to propane.
Yeah, and I, I think there was some discussion about putting radiant heat in the building too. Uh, but we're getting off track here with that and, and we can, we can pick that up, uh, at a capital meeting, I guess, on that. Next article, Article nine, uh, fiscal year two thousand and fifteen budget, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate to borrow and to transfer from available funds such sums of money as being deemed necessary to defray town expenses for all departments, including debt and interest, and including the compensation for town offices to provide for the reserve fund for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand and fourteen, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen, or take any action in relation thereto. Okay, that's the, the budget article.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just a suggestion from years past, what the chairman would do is read the total for each department and ask anybody if there was, uh, any discussion or questions to, um, state hold loudly and then we can go back to the beginning and address questions of the hold items.
That sounds, uh, reasonable. Sure.
Okay. Total moderator department, this year two thousand and fifteen, requested a hundred and fifty dollars.
I would do this one.
This one?
Because that's what they're looking at.
Oh.
And I would just do, just the totals at the start.
Okay. Total moderator department, fif- a hundred and fifty dollars. Total selectman department, six thousand one hundred dollars. Total executive secretary salaries, sixty-six, four eighty.
Hold.
Wait a minute, you, you're going.
Oh, I'm sorry, sixty-eight, four eighty, sorry.
Was there a hold on that?
Hold on that one?
Yes, hold.
Okay, that's fine. Total finance committee, fifty thousand, three eighty. Total town, hold on a second. Total town accountant. Total town accountant department, thirty-nine, nine forty-eight.
Hold.
Total assessors department, fifty-five, five, three, six. Total treasurer collector department, seventy thousand, three, one, oh.
Hold.
Total town council, forty thousand. Total systems administration, thirty thousand.
Hold.
Total town clerk department, thirty-three, seven, five, zero. Total elections and registration, six thousand nine hundred dollars. Total census, two thousand two hundred dollars. Total conservation department, three thousand one hundred and fifty-four dollars. Total planning board, fifteen thousand, four, ten. Total zoning board, six hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Total town hall costs, ninety-seven thousand, two, five, zero.
Hold.
Total insurance accounts, two hundred and sixty-one thousand even. Total Worcester County retirement, sixty-one thousand, nine, forty-seven. Total police department, three ninety-six, five, five, zero. Total fire department, two six nine, five, two, five. Total building inspector department, seventeen thousand, seven, four, nine.
That was a hold.
That's a hold?
Yes.
Total gas and plumbing inspector, two thousand two hundred dollars. Total electrical inspector, thirty-six hundred even. Total civil defense department, two thousand eight hundred and fifty. Total animal control department, seven thousand eight hundred and fifty. Total tree warden department, five thousand even. Total communications department, sixty-six, five, eight, zero. Total education expenses, two million eight hundred seventy thousand, eight, sixty-six.
Hold.
Total highway maintenance, one hundred and ten thousand, six, five, zero.
Hold. You skipped the, um.
Did I miss one?
Yeah, the total highway surveyor salaries.
I'm sorry, total highway surveyor salaries, seventeen thousand even. Total snow and ice removal expenses, eighty thousand. Total highway street lighting, sixteen thousand even. Total highway street sweeping, fourteen thousand even. Total stormwater, twelve thousand even. Total board of health expense, in total, the whole count, two sixty-nine, three hundred. Total visiting nurse, nursing services, two thousand six hundred and fifty. Total human services, zero. Total senior center, forty-one thousand, five, ten. Total veterans department, twenty-eight thousand, four, fifty. Total library, seventeen thousand, nine, eighty-five. Total parks and recreation, thirty-five hundred even. Total veterans memorial park, thirty-five hundred even. Total historical commission, four hundred. Total Memorial Day parade, two hundred and fifty dollars. Total centennial celebration, five hundred. Total cultural council, forty-two dollars. Total flag warden, three hundred and fifty dollars. Total debt and interest, fifty-five thousand, six, four, zero. For a grand total of five million, one hundred and sixty-two thousand, two, eighteen.
Revenue available is five thousand ninety-two thousand, five million ninety-two thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars, and that left a deficit of sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. To balance the budget, that money would be coming out of, um, free cash? Yeah. Okay. Go back and discuss the holds. And the first one I had was the executive secretary's office.
Do you want me to come up?
Yeah, please.
I was just wondering for the executive se- uh, sec- secretary. You have two different line items, one for salary and one for secretary, are they two different people? And then, um, I was just wondering what type of expenses that you have compared to just regular office expenses?
Um, travel, subscriptions, dues, possibly education. Uh, this budget increases my line item, or actually last year's budget increased the line item from one thousand to two thousand, which was contractual. The Board of Selectmen agreed to fund, uh, the line item an additional thousand dollars in case I wanted to take a class throughout the year.
Okay. I'm gonna sit up here, cause I think I have a few holds. But go easy.
Any other questions on that? Okay, the next hold was the town accountant expenses. Town, town accountant department.
I was, twelve fifty? Oh, the town accountant professional, I was wondering what that was, what's that being used? Cause there was a big jump in the amount for that. It increased, it looked like by one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. I was just wondering if you could explain that increase.
That again, I think was contractual.
It is, uh, the entire town accountant's budget is contractual. Uh, what I can tell you is that our town accountant has been with us for twenty-five years. And during that time, she had always been the full-time town accountant for the town of Bellingham. And during that time, much of the expenses, um, were covered by the town of Bellingham because she would already be a member of, um, you know, different organizations and she would attend conventions and seminars on Bellingham's dime. So now that she was retired, uh, we do have to pick up a little bit more, uh, on the expense end for her to continue attending seminars and, you know, dues and subscriptions and things such as that.
Can you ex- um, the O P E B evaluation?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, what is it?
Yep, this is a new state mandate, um, it's other post-retirement benefits or post-employment benefits, once, uh, an employee retires. Um, what the state is requiring we do is, um, forecast what our expenses will be going years ahead so we can start setting money aside for retirees.
Okay.
So we have to have a consultant do an evaluation each year that we submit to the state.
Okay.
Can that vary year to year, probably? Yeah, the twelve hundred will vary year to year, right?
Um, the cost of the consultant, I don't imagine it would go up very much.
No, I meant the, oh, I see the evaluation, I got it, okay.
Yeah, this is just for the evaluation.
I got you, okay. I think that was it, so let's go to the next one, which was treasurer collector department hold.
On the software maintenance, it seems high, what is it, for special software, what is it?
Um, that's our real estate software and our payroll software. And that's for the annual contracts to have and use the software for the number of, um, computers that it's on within the building.
Okay. Thank you, Chad, you're fine.
The, the next one was the systems administration that was on hold.
Okay, um, the miscellaneous expenses?
M I, M I S.
What's M I S then? I took it for miscellaneous.
Yep, uh, M I S expenses, actually that line item, um, goes to an outsourced vendor um, who does all of our, um, IT work for us. That company is Worldband out of Milford, that's who's been contracted for FY fifteen. And we pay this on a monthly basis. Um, and they handle all of our issues that we have with our computers and make sure all of our virus. Um, and they handle all of our issues that we have with our computers and make sure all of our virus, you know, protection is up to date. They do our backups.
But for the full year, that's thirty thousand for the full year?
That's the contracted amount for the full year, correct.
Okay.
Okay, the next hold was, uh, on page five at the bottom, total town hall expenses of ninety seven two five zero.
I was looking to get an explanation of the maintenance agreements?
Um, those are any agreements we have here in the town hall. Um, gosh, let me try to think of some off the top of my head. Charter communications for the television and computer would be a maintenance agreement. Maintenance agreements for the oil burner preventative maintenance.
Okay.
Um, let's see, uh, pest control maintenance agreements.
Okay.
Um, things that we usually pay either on a monthly basis or quarterly to maintain the building.
Okay, um, advertising, is that for mailings out to the town?
Nope, that's, um, primarily advertising in the local newspaper, legal ads or help wanted ads.
I'd like the notice you just saw.
Okay. Telephone seemed high.
It is high.
Okay. Not the other way.
Yep, we just, um, we signed a new contract, uh, last year. I believe it's a five-year contract with Verizon.
Okay.
And, uh, that's for the, um, the entire town, all the landlines for all of the buildings, uh, is what that covers.
Do you?
But just to note one thing, in past years.
Yeah.
Uh, thirteen thousand nine oh six fiscal year eleven, sixteen thousand four fifty eight fiscal twelve, fifteen thousand five twenty five fiscal year thirteen. It's, you know, in line.
Yeah. Not, first time coming in, I, the telephone, I didn't know if it was for the actual telephones and the voicemail systems or if it was like in order to have a phone near your house, that cost, that's what I was trying to get.
No, it's for all of the, the lines within the, within the town.
Okay.
The town facilities.
Okay.
That would be including alarm stuff too as well, like what?
Uh, there are some of our alarms that have telephone lines, yes.
If I wanted to make a suggestion to the town regarding maybe replacing the telephone, where, which committee would I go to?
Replacing it with a different company or?
Or just like I P, I P over voice or something, maybe looking into it when this contract is up.
Um, you'd probably wanna come in and speak with me about that.
Okay, I'll do that. Does the custodial equipment, I'm, I'm thinking include supplies?
It does, correct.
And office expenses for the town hall, uh, what departments does that cover?
Um, the business office, so the town clerk, treasurer collector, my office.
Okay.
The assessors and the board of health have their own.
You know, we dropped that, that number's gonna drop down from previous.
I was just curious what, which departments it covered.
Okay, go.
I'm done with, yes, we can move on, thank you.
Okay, go, alright. Uh, page eight, the hold was for building inspector department seventeen seven four nine.
I just, it's actually on page seven at the start of that. Um, I was wondering if you could explain that from two thousand fourteen to two thousand and fifteen, there was a very large increase. If you could just explain what that increase is.
That's the one where we eliminated. Every inspection was, was getting, was thirty dollars an hour, was thirty dollars.
Okay.
And we did away with that, that fee and we went to an hourly rate for the individual. So in other words, for every inspection did it over the day, he was getting an additional ninety dollars above that six thousand. What we did was take that away and it's all within his hourly rate. And so now if he has three inspections to do, it's based on the time that he spends on it at an hourly rate versus a, um...
Three inspections would have yielded ninety dollars.
Ninety dollars.
Nine, you know.
He could've gotten three inspections done in, say, two hours, that was forty five dollars an hour.
Okay.
On it, whereas now it's based on this.
So we basically shifted things around, so it looks like it's an increase, but we, we do have revenues that, you know, you can, we have revenues coming in for the fees that we, that we charge, uh, residents for an inspection in plumbing, electrical roughing, whatever that is.
Okay.
And we, and is there anything else we should be saying? No, I think you pretty much covered it.
Okay, thank you.
Good catch. Um, page ten, no, it's in standout, uh, page ten, uh, total highway maintenance one one zero six five zero.
No, I apologize, so I saw the storm water.
Oh, you're right.
At zero, but I'm not.
Oh, we moved it down.
I'm not used to seeing it down, so I have to throw my hold.
Okay, alright, I did.
Thank you.
I did skip one, very important one.
Alright, before, before you go back, while we're still at the highway.
You wanna just keep going?
No, no, the, we skipped the school department.
By accident.
Yeah, um, but before, while we're still at the highway department, um...
Is it anyway? Let me look, is there any more?
I lost my train of thought.
Um, that happens when you get a little bit. That's it. Did you have something else?
He's not questioning anything else, really.
No, I just wanna give an explanation. Brian asked for a hundred thousand dollars for road repairs on it. And he could go through a hundred thousand dollars plus. Based on where the budget is, we did increase it from twenty eight thousand to fifty thousand. But that's something, um, that we need to work closely with Brian to keep, to get, increase that because that is, um, a big issue in town, the condition of the roads. And I just wanted to explain, we did try to put some more money into that account on there and we'll continue to look at that. Okay, now we'll go back to.
Alright, so, uh, now's when the fun begins. Total education expenses, this was placed as a hold. The, uh, total budget is two million eight seven oh eight six six.
What page do you want?
Uh, page ten. Nine means ten.
Discussion?
Okay, um. We'll be, we have a school committee meeting tomorrow night and one thing to talk about is budget, trying to, you know, I know some of our members have been paying the Blackstone meetings this week. So tomorrow's when we're gonna kind of come together, you know, and compare the numbers from two towns, um...
Yeah, could you come up with one? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Um, they keep telling us that the audience can't hear when everybody's sitting.
You could slide outside.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
Okay. I'm Steve Tringali from the school committee, in case I wasn't aware, but, um, I'm looking at the, um, education expenses. The, um, B M R regional school last year was two million two hundred and eight five thousand. Uh, we requested two million seven oh four and, uh, were recommended, uh, two million, um, two hundred and eighty eight thousand. B V T, two hundred and seventy seven thousand three thirty two and, uh, they were recommended two ninety four sixty seven. Basically, I, I understand Mr. Finn, they came with, uh, Dr. Fitzpatrick recently and they outlined their plan for additional programs, which should be applauded. I understand the concept. It's a good idea to basically, um, pull kids back from Norfolk Aggie and some of the other districts and, you know, do them within our, our own, um, region. But, again, what they, they were given additional money to build additional programs. I would wonder if we were given the opportunity to build additional programs, would we be given additional money? We being B M R.
Explain that a little bit better.
Um.
They have a, a debt exclusion that they ask for for the additional programs.
Okay.
That's where the additional programs came in. They also had, asked for an additional contribution, six thousand one hundred and eleven dollars on that.
Okay.
And we approved that.
Okay. But just looking down the list, the, the various school bills here, the only budget that got an additional contribution was Blackston Valley Tech. Can you explain, you know?
It was very minimal, six thousand four hundred and eleven dollars.
I understand.
As opposed to four hundred and fifteen thousand on it, so...
But again, the, the reason being recognition that they were replicating or they were adding additional programs.
I, I think you got, you got.
Yeah.
It's not in his budget, that's.
It's not in his budget.
One is an operating budget.
Yes.
That's what we're talking about here. The operating budget did go up slightly as we said.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
The rationale why it went up because ninety one point three percent of it is state mandated.
Okay, but.
So of the six thousand dollars that's requested, about a thousand dollars of it is actual new dollars that we're asking for. One thousand dollars, that's its operating.
But can, can you explain the, um, yes, you have state mandated requirements, as do all schools? So how is it you're able to pull that out of your budget?
I think you meant the minimum contribution.
Yeah, hold on, I think it's the minimum, it's, it's, it's what the requirement is by the state is what you have to pay. You have the same thing on M R S, you have the same thing with spare students, all schools regardless of vocational or.
Exactly.
A subject the same thing. So what we're presenting here is operating budget. Don't confuse operating budget with the intent of the two point nine million dollar expansion spread over thirteen towns. That's a whole different issue as opposed to operating budget.
Okay.
That help?
Okay, again, we need to sort of come together with, you know, what's happening in Blackston as well. And, you know, we'll, once we have a clearer picture, we'll probably be bringing this up again on, on Monday.
Good, good.
Okay, if I understand this correct, I was down here when, uh, B V T in front of the board of selectmen did their presentation and I believe that there's about, and he can correct me if I'm wrong, about seventy three students that go to B V T from Millville.
Forty three.
Forty three, forty three. How many, and I'm not positive, but I'm pretty sure there's probably more students go to Millville Regional School than forty three from Millville. To the high school, or actually, it's middle school and high school. So my question is, is that the, regional school got three thousand forty nine dollars more in additional funding from the town this year whereas Blackston Va- uh, B V T received thirteen thousand one hundred and thirty five. They're supporting less students than Millville Regional. Is there a reason why we can't at least contribute the same amount of money that you are to B V T to the mi- uh, the regional schools who's, who service a larger amount of children?
So, I'm, 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 I lost you on that, uh...
Okay, basically, instead of three thousand forty nine dollars, is there any reason why we can't?
Where, where are the three thousand?
I took two two eight eight three sixty one, which is the two thousand and fifteen finance committee recommends.
Yeah.
It's minus the two thousand and fourteen number and I came up with three thousand forty nine dollars.
Okay.
Okay, and then what I did for, uh, B V T, I took the year two thousand and fifteen recommended number and minus the two thousand and fourteen number and I came up with thirteen thousand one hundred and thirty five.
Yeah, sixty one hundred is, um, the, the, the number they talked about and then the balance of that is the, um...
Minimum contribution.
The minimum of contribution.
So I have to minus about six thousand dollars.
Sixty one hundred?
Of the minimum con- contribution. So the minimum contribution that the state requires, the ta- what's the minimum contribution that the state requires Millville to contribute to the regional school?
Two million two hundred and eighty eight thousand three hundred and sixty one dollars.
Okay, did not understand that. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Sir.
Yeah, I'm glad both schools are represented here. Mr. Tringali, could you answer for me what the cost per student for B M R is with this budget?
I'll admit, I should know off the top of my head, I don't right now. I'll have that for you on Monday though.
Can you, can you give me a ballpark?
Roughly?
I don't wanna misspeak, so I admit, I should know off the top of my head, I apologize.
Okay, and Mr. Finn?
Uh, seventy one hundred dollars.
Seventy one hundred. Would you say that the B M R one is higher than that?
I would watch people, uh...
Not you, not you, Mr. Tringali.
Yes, I would, I would say so.
Okay, thank you.
I would wanna say one thing, Mr. Chairman, uh, according to the state, right, the, uh, dual competency, you know, on the vocational side as well as the academic side, which is what the, these missions, the location, um, traditionally is, uh, twice as expensive as that you have. That is a traditional norm statement. We have been very fortunate here at this time because of the, uh, lack of businesses and business revenues that helps to help, uh, increase the amount of payment we have. We're a bedroom community. We are the lowest of all the other twelve towns in our consulting. The reason for that is we don't have any business base. It's been the back of the tax base and that's why we're at such a great rate.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Sir.
I apologize, I'm trying to find if I have, uh, the cost per pupil.
Too big for a town. Yeah, we talked about it, it was like ninety three hundred dollars, something like that.
Any other questions on that, on that hold?
We have another article, article ten.
What?
Article ten.
Oh, was that the last hold, woman?
Uh, that was it for the hold.
That was it?
Yeah, 'cause we, we did all the holds and then came back to the school.
Okay, any other, um, discussion on the budget numbers before we move on? Hearing none. Article ten, stabilization fund. See if the town will vote and raise an appropriate and/or transfer from available funds a sum of money to be placed in the previously created stabilization fund under Mass General, uh, chapter forty, squiggle five B or take any other action.
Swiggle, okay.
Uh, finance committee recommends the article is written and sadly, we recommend two thousand two hundred and sixty four dollars and eighty three cents to be put in the stabilization fund. Uh, one of our goals, uh, when we started early on back in January was to, uh, fund the stabilization fund, at least what we put in it last year. Uh, my compliments to Paul, when he was on this board, uh, he was able to get to the low end and start building that stabilization fund up again and I appreciate all you did. And I wish we could've put more money into it this year, we couldn't. Uh, but that was one of our goals going into this, this year, so... With that, the board approves the article is written. Any discussion?
What do you end up using the stabilization fund for, any?
Um...
I know you've probably tried.
Capital items.
Okay.
Right.
Crises that we would have within the town that come up, um, if something came up, which was a large expense, an emergency situation, um, we would use that.
For physi- for physical plant, for, for buildings and...
Yeah, it's, it's for emergencies, uh, per se.
And then in addition, does, it's just fiscally responsible and sound to do that and, uh, eventually, if you, if you increase your stabilization you can get your bond rating to, to actually be able to borrow against.
Borrow.
Every town has to have something. There's, a lot of towns have a great deal more money than this.
It's a rainy day fund and it's been raining for a long time.
Yeah, unfortunately, what's happened, because of the recession, because of the cutback in, in the state funding for the towns, uh, the town of Millville had to use stabilization funds for operational costs. Building this, which is a big no-no, um, for the most part. They had to 'cause they had no choice, they had to keep the town, town going. Paul, when he was on the board with the rest of the board, turned it in the other direction and we're trying to continue to do that, so...
In order to transfer, transfer out of stabilization fund, they come before the finance committee and is it a full board vote that has to vote, is it a?
It has to be the town, the town meeting.
Town meeting.
It's a town meeting, so...
Mm-hmm, it, it needs a super majority for that, I think it's two thirds.
Two thirds, two thirds.
Two thirds, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Rich, I'm gonna step right now, does the town have the opportunity to get a bond rating?
No.
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 And why is that?
We, um, our, for the most part, we are living hand to mouth with our budget. We don't have enough in stabilization to, um, adequately, um... We don't have enough in stabilization to um adequately, um, adequate risk, so there, there's more risk to, to give us alone because we don't have enough to back it up than, you know, mm-hmm.
Thank you.
One more question, um, is there a reason why the finance committee has not recommended going to the voters of this town for any type of override to help fund the stabilization fund, so that way we can get a bond rating?
They can't do that.
That, no, that doesn't work that way.
No? Yeah.
You can't get an override and put it in the stabilization, has to be for something specific, the override has to be for a specific item.
So we're. And we can't, say we can't, our specific item can't be stabilization?
No, no.
We can't increase taxes just to put it in savings.
Putting it into savings, yeah.
No. Okay.
Yeah, that was the purpose of two and a half and.
Joe, what's the um, what's the, your understanding that you have to, how much do you have to have sitting?
Ten percent of your budget.
Ten percent of your budget should be in stabilization or you have, so that would put you at five hundred and twenty thousand dollars roughly.
Yes, Mr. Chairman?
If you remember, um, in the past, very few past years ago, um, we did have a ballot question to raise taxes in order to operate the town for operational and that was, that failed.
Correct. Right.
The people were against that, they wanted us to work within our revenue like they do at home, so.
We did. Okay.
So just a reminder there that we did put the effort in and we, the answer was made loud and clear, uh, large majority said no.
You know, I, I went out and looked that up, that was on twenty-one June two thousand fourteen.
Okay.
For municipal services, we were looking for three hundred thousand dollars, uh, yes vote was a hundred and twenty-six, no was uh four hundred and fifteen.
Right.
Two thousand eleven.
So the message was.
Two thousand eleven.
Eleven, excuse me, eleven, and the second question was for the school was a hundred K
Two thousand eleven. Yep.
And that lost by three eighty-two to one fifty-seven.
The only one that passed was the trash.
So the message was loud and clear.
That was a separate year too.
Was it a separate year?
Yeah.
Work, work within, you know, live within your means, don't overextend, thanks.
I think that's it for our articles because the rest are standing.
That is, that is, the rest are articles, um, any other discussion on the budget items we discussed tonight?
And you would just need a motion to close your public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we'll go back into our um regular meeting, any other business uh before the board?
No, I have uh no reserve fund transfers and I do not have any budget transfers at this time.
Okay, final public forum? Absolutely. What's that?
Water debt meeting.
Our next meeting is gonna be right before the um town, special town meeting.
And that is on Monday, May twelfth.
Monday the twelfth.
Six o'clock or?
Yep.
Six thirty at the.
So ours is, ours is six o'clock.
Six o'clock at the um, at the school, yep.
No, no, no.
This is gonna be a wicked easy question. As some of you may know, I serve on the parade committee.
Yep.
And I was wondering if I could get a total on what we have left in our gift account, if you have a running tally budget. I know we have the two fifty that was approved at the town meeting, but you can give me a total on the balance of that one. And we just had our meeting before this one, so they asked me to find out that information.
I left my, my expense report out in the car.
It was easy when I sat there, I could just.
I know, I had one, I left it out there.
I know you served on that.
No, he's looking for this year's, how much is expected left?
Yeah, what's, what's left right as of right now.
Yeah.
Twenty fifteen.
And this is just your donation account, correct?
Yeah, 'cause we know we have the two fifty that's on the.
Yep, uh, four eighty-one seventeen.
Four eighty-one seventeen, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Okay, um, nothing on the public forum and motion to adjourn, if there's nothing.
I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting of, of May seven, two thousand fourteen.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Eyes have it, uh, hope to see, um, be turned on at the town meeting, thank you all.
That's it.